It being seven o'clock, I need to read a few items here. Pursuant to chapter two of the Acts of 2025, this meeting will be conducted by a remote means. Members of the public who wish to watch or listen to the meeting may do so in the following manner. Video conference with login information on the agenda for the planning board meetings tonight, which is on the town website. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be available, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so, despite best efforts, we will post on the Topsfield website an audio or video recording transcript or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. With that, I'm delighted to call this meeting of the planning board to order. And I have one more announcement. This meeting is being recorded via Zoom in the event that the connection is lost at any time during the meeting. The meeting is also being recorded by Topsfield Cable TV and will be available on the Topsfield website cable video on demand page. Is there anyone else present who wishes to record the meeting?
Well, now Martha.
Recording in progress.
Very good. Thank you. Okay, our first item is the continuation of the public hearing for a stormwater management permit for 30 Canterbury, 30 Canterbury Hill. I understand that we have a report from the reviewing engineer Lynn.
Alex is here.
Yes, Alex is here. And I think Mr. Koshi is here as well.
Yes, do you mean our engineer Martha?
No.
Okay. I didn't know if you wanted me to mention.
From us, we do, we do have our engineer, you know.
Yeah, and that was a positive recommendation.
Right.
Hello, do you want me to share my screen?
Yes, would you?
Hello, I'm Alex Chongers with Chongers Engineering. I represent the applicant at 30 Canterbury Road. As Lynn said, this did get the sign off from Greg from your, who you guys use to review. Can you guys see my screen?
Yes.
So I'm not sure if you guys remember this project, but this is a project at 30 Canterbury Road. We're filing for a stormwater permit after the fact due to regulations that triggered it. The applicant put a retaining wall on the back, as you can see over here. We are currently working with conservation as there, we do have some of the wall that was within the buffer zone. We are filing a waiver and are hoping to get that passed. But regardless, if that doesn't get, doesn't get the waiver, we are going to be pushing the wall further up. So we're beyond the hundred foot buffer. And with that said, that's not going to change the initial, the proposed stormwater plan that we have presented. So right now what we're doing is this, there, he has a hidden addition on his prop, on his house. And he, we're proposing to collect this portion of the roof and the entire driveway. And we're pushing it into a call tech system underground. And that's going to mitigate the stormwater. We keep the peak rates below the hundred year storm and on that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Okay, any members of the board? This has been a long time in coming before getting to this point. Anyone?
I'm just, I'm looking at the contours. The retaining wall is, is this a, it is, it's a, it's presenting a relatively flat backyard.
Correct. Yeah, the retaining walls are built and it's, it's essentially was making the backyard walkable. So they can do something with the backyard. You can see the contours ahead of time. This is a, that's the existing contours.
Yeah.
And now we're, now we're here.
Still, I'm sure. So the status with the cons comm is that when, when are you going to meet with them?
So that's going to be filed with Goddard, I believe. I think there was a legal ad issue. It was supposed to be next week, but I think the sale newspaper screwed up an ad unfortunately. So that got pushed back to the next meeting, I believe. I'm not representing the applicant on that one. It's a Goddard Consulting. But again, that's us really what, if they all come with that is whether, can you guys see my mouse movement? Is whether this portion of the wall stays where it is, or if it's getting pushed further back. That'd be the only difference. That is a, you know, if they don't grant us the waiver, because we are filing after the fact with conservation.
And moving that wouldn't have any impact on the stormwater.
At the end of the day, it make my numbers better because you're going to be bringing more impervious. It's be bringing more woods back to, from what's there, so.
Okay, anyone else? Any other comments? Steve, if you're speaking, you're mute.
I apologize. Yeah, I'm, is there a larger locust map? That shows the proximity of the next structure to the, what would be to the right of that.
Thank you. The greatest quality.
Yeah, okay.
I can kind of see right there.
Yeah.
If I can get a zoom.
No, 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 that, that's fine. I, that, that's great. I'm just looking at, at that. That's why I want, I was curious about the contours as to how water flowed before this. And how it.
So I can, I wish I, I don't know if I could, but right now during, I can show you my drainage map, but.
No, no, I, I got this. This is great. Thank you. And it's about 20 feet from the recalc system to the property line. Is that right? Is that what I saw on the map?
We are proposing 19.8 feet from the, the property line, yes, and about 12 ish feet from the existing retaining wall that's there. So that's above state regs. States request, state recommendations 10 feet.
Yes, and I say that you have a swale on the property line.
Yep, we're proposing having a swale push all the water back. I mean, technically, like if you, when you look at the contours from the existing, it kind of shows the majority of the water was kind of directing this way. And we're kind of essentially altering it the other way. But however, we are collecting a large portion of the water into these chambers underground.
Right. But the, and the contour just shows a modest swale, keeping it against the proposed retaining wall or the existing, the new retaining.
Correct. And then once the site gets stabilized, the, the intent of the design is once a site gets stabilized, there's not going to be too much water pushing down the swell. That's just the water when it does rain that gets there. Well, in this section over here is going to fall down the, the retaining wall towards the back of the property.
Great. Okay.
Design.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Anyone else want to ask anything? No. Okay, well, that means that we need a motion to close the public hearing.
We moved.
Okay, we have second. Very good. Thank you. Our roll call. Zilly?
Hi.
Jenny?
Hi.
Greg? Greg? Okay, you're on mute. Steve?
Aye.
And I vote aye.
Sorry, aye, sorry.
Thank you. Okay, now we need a motion to approve the stormwater permit based on this plan.
I'll make that, I'll make that motion to approve.
Second.
And silly seconds. Okay, so roll call Jenny?
Aye.
Greg?
Aye.
Zilly?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
And I say aye. So very good. Canterbury, 30 Canterbury is now good to go with stormwater. Congratulations. We're happy that it's all taken care of. Okay, now we have an item, the stormwater signature authorization. Lynn, would you like to explain what this is?
Well, as we had discussed at a couple of meetings ago, we no longer have a stormwater coordinator. So we have the outside stormwater engineering firm who's doing the analysis. The financial group has determined that when we collect the money to pay for that fee, which is $950, they have to establish an escrow account for each and every applicant. So an escrow agreement has to be created. It has to be signed by the applicant at the time that they are dropping off their fee and their application. And then it needs to be signed by the board. So what we were looking to do tonight, if it, if the board's in agreement, is to give that authority to the chair so that we don't have to have everybody come into the town hall and sign every escrow agreement.
I'm moved to authorize Martha to sign on behalf of us for everything you just said.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Should, should we authorize the, you know, Steve as well?
Backup.
Yeah, backup.
It's a good idea.
It is a good.
I amend, I amend my motion to authorize Martha and Steve.
So Steve is.
Assuming Steve wants it as the alternate.
I am happy to serve.
Very good. Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Greg?
Aye.
Zilly?
Aye.
Jenny?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Okay, great. So now, it's a very complicated system that has been created, just so everyone knows. But we're told that this is the way it has to happen. Anyway, our next item is a discussion about the, it's the sound barrier, the erection of the sound barrier at Conemaugh Farm at 252 Rowley Bridge. They, they came to us to ask if they needed a stormwater permit. And I congratulate them for doing so, you know, paying attention to that. And as it turns out, one of the exemptions in stormwater is for fence. If you're just putting in fence posts, and that's what this is, it's a series of fence posts that then hold up the barrier. And so they're requesting that we grant that exemption.
Steve, you're on mute.
See, I did it backwards. Are you sure you want me to sign for things? I'll, I'll make that motion to designate this.
Grant the exemption.
Grant the exemption.
As exempt, yes.
Yeah, I second it.
Thank you, Greg. Co-roll call Jenny?
Aye.
Okay, Steve?
Aye.
Zilly?
Aye.
Greg?
Aye.
And then I vote aye. Okay. Now comes something, and I am really, really sorry. We tried twice to get representatives of 249 Rowley Bridge Road, that is Alfalfa Farm, to come to this meeting tonight. I was hoping that we could have a, a discussion about the status of work at Alfalfa Farm. But no one's here. And what we got was when I'm back, Mr. Don Hauser said that he, he could meet with us maybe next week when he gets back from his trip. Well, just so everyone understands what's going on, all we're, all we're talking about is stormwater management. That we're not talking about the use of the property. We're not talking about, you know, any of the, you know, details that other boards are concerned about. Our job is stormwater management. And for, I think many know that we've had stormwater and erosion control by law for 20 years in the town of Topsfield. It was the first requirement for our first MS4 permit. So we created the bylaw, the rules and the regulations along with an illicit discharge bylaw to meet those first requirements for the MS4 permit. Over the years, we have amended the bylaw. We have made the rules and regulations stricter to keep pace with EPA regulations. Because this is all based on the federal EPA. We are going to be adding to our rules and regulations more this year because the EPA is requiring us to do so. And we've had very nice conversations with them. So this has been around for 20 years. And in all of the 20 years that we have been managing this bylaw, we have never had a situation like this ever. Our, our building department used to inform people that they needed a stormwater permit. And they, people complied. I mean, no one didn't. And if they, more recently, we've run into cases where people weren't told that they needed a stormwater permit. But as soon as we got ahold of them and talked to them, they stopped work on, on the outside. They stopped doing whatever they were doing. And so, as you know, we have cleared a number of stormwater erosion control permits in recent months for all of these people that we've been catching up with. So that's some background. We have told the developers at Alfalfa Farm on numerous occasions that they need a stormwater permit. The town administrator has told them that they need a stormwater and erosion control permit. And yet we have nothing. We have no application. We got something in the way of a plan that is different from the other plans that have been submitted to entities in the town. So what we wanted to do tonight was that we wanted to discuss with the developers, first of all, why the plan that we most recently received is so radically different from the plans before the ZBA and the select board? We wanted to require erosion control, you know, features to be installed along the buffer zone, you know, the edge of the, the buffer zone. And we wanted to ask them why they were continuing to dump huge amounts of fill and bulldoze it in, you know, grading when they don't have a permit. But we can't ask that question because they are not here. So the board needs to, we, we are obligated to enforce this bylaw, in my opinion. It's our job to do it. And it's, this is not some random local bylaw. This is an EPA requirement. And that the EPA takes these matters very seriously. So we have to do something in order to, one, demonstrate that the town of Topsfield is living up to its MS4 permit obligations. And we need to do something to, to deal with work that's going on that is unpermitted. And this isn't a minor amount of work. If anyone has driven by, there have been mountains of fill brought in. And bulldozers and excavators, you know, working all the time, pushing it around. And so it's up to the board to determine what to do. No. So I'm open. I know we have, I can see at least two abutters that I recognize, you know, from the video. And we welcome comments, you know, from the abutters, you know, from the public. And, but first I'd like members of the board to say what they think. That, you know, I don't think there's any question that we have to do something to enforce this bylaw. Now the question is, how do we go about doing it?
I'll start.
Okay, Steve?
I'd like the board to send an immediate letter to the building inspector insisting on a cease and desist order. Be be written and presented to the project people immediately.
I don't think the building inspector has anything to do with this, you know.
Who, who does the cease and desist?
We do.
Oh, we, oh, well then I, I'll make, after discussion, I'll be the first to make that motion. This is incredible. I mean, I've driven by several times and, and Martha's not joking around. There is a lot of material being moved around on that site. And it's unconscionable that that be done without, without it being reviewed. And this isn't a power trip. As, as Martha said, we're required to fulfill, you know, our obligations under EPA regulations. So that's where I'm at with this.
Yeah, I, I agree with Steve. And do, do we have some kind of, you know, paper trail in terms of the times that we've, we've notified them and reminded them?
We have the recent emails that were sent out.
Yeah. There. I, I think we should be, you know, pretty clear with this cease and desist, that the, these are the instances where we've, you know, requested your cooperation and, and we haven't received it, and therefore you need to stop.
Okay.
Jenny? Can you help me understand?
Zilly, go ahead.
Can you help me understand what? Like, has there been anything granted through the building inspector at all?
Our current building inspector believes that he needs to grant a building permit within 30 days of receipt of the building permit application if it all meets building code. So he received architectural plans, you know, drawings and so on for what was going to be built there. And he granted the building permit. They have not, they have only had a brief discussion with cons comm. And by the way, a fair amount of the grading on both the plans before the ZBA and the selectment and the plan that we received is actually in the buffer zone. And that that requires, and they've been told by cons comm that that requires a special permit from the conservation commission. To their credit, cons comm told them to put up erosion control features, you know, along the buffer zone. And they did that today. They finally did it today. But the issue of a stormwater application is complicated by the fact that they first, before they can do any of this, they have to go to cons comm and get a special permit to do all the grading that they're proposing in the buffer zone. Okay.
Okay, I'm interested in that, what Greg mentioned as far as paper trail. I'm just interested in like understanding what they were told and understood, made to understand.
Well, Kevin has been, Kevin has been the most, you know, has been the most involved in this. And he has been told for months that they need a stormwater permit. And actually, Mr. Don Hauser was told directly by Lynn way back that he needed a stormwater permit. Kevin has said that he has asked him and he has promised, oh yes, it's coming, it's coming. And we gave them a deadline of October 21st to produce something. It was supposed to be a comprehensive site plan. And yet a third party, a different engineer altogether, produced the most recent plan that came in on maybe the 22nd or something. And it's not comprehensive and it's different from the previous plans. So I mean, this is very confusing all around.
Also, it's incumbent on them to know what the bylaws are in a town that they're doing work in.
Jenny, can you? Yeah. A little bit?
Oh, I just said it's incumbent on them to, to know what the bylaws are, are in a town they're doing work in. So, you know.
Yeah, the reason I'm asking is, well, not the reason, I'm just trying to, have not, having not been through many of these yet. I was thinking about the property at the corner of High Street and Route One that had been, you know, back and forth, you know, extending, extending, extending. And didn't they end up changing who they were working with? Because whoever they were, the professional that they were working with wasn't doing the job correctly.
Right.
That's what I understood.
They hired one engineer out in Lancaster who was using two dimensional CAD software to produce a stormwater management plan for that property. And, but they filed an application. They paid a fee. It was just that their engineer.
At least they filed the application. We haven't even received one at all.
Yeah, so they withdrew the application. They found a competent engineer, you know, then came back with an application. So it's rather different. At least they were following, you know, they were following the process. And it was just unfortunate that their engineer wasn't up to the task. This, there, there's nothing. No application. There's not a decent plan. It doesn't match anything else. And then, you know, there's, so now the answer was, well, we, we'll talk next week when I get back. And who is he going to talk to next week? I mean, we're meeting tonight.
Well, yeah, that, I find that oftentimes, I just don't know who, if these people have had a business before. I don't actually know that much about their background.
And I believe that one of the parties is the vice president of facilities at Boston Scientific.
Okay. Thinking about the public process, like I think that when you're, for someone who's starting a business like this type of thing, if they haven't, they're counting on professionals who should know and follow and understand how public meeting works and that you can't just say, let me talk to you next week because that's not how it works. So I guess I just, the reason I'm asking these questions is to try to get a sense of whether they're being negligent or whether they're just a little unaware of how things work when you're going through a, a process with a municipality and like public permitting, permitting through this kind of process.
Well, actually, silly, we can ask, Mr. Monaco was present, he's in, in the, on the call. Mr. Monaco was at the meeting that Mr. Don Hauser had with the Amberwood residence before the recent ZBA meeting. And I was told, I wasn't there, but I was told that the matter of stormwater management and calculations came up at the meeting. And Mr. Monaco, can you tell us what you were told? You need to unmute.
Are you mute?
No.
Hello?
Yes. First of all, thank you for having this meeting. I want to just give you a little background. I'm, our concern, everybody around here, it kind of culminates with this simple procedure that has to take place out there. And we're really concerned about other things out there. But having said that, 276, when they built that, the engineers and the, and the construction people there were very good. They came right in, they put in their, you know, siltation control. And I mean, they were very neat about what they did. And that was just a, you know, I mean, nobody told them that I, I mean, I've seen it every day and they did what they had to do.
And they did have.
What's that? Which one are you referring to?
276, it's a, it was a housing for the, I forget the name of the operation.
Disabled.
Invalid. But the, the, usually a contractor knows who's done this before in site work, what to do.
Yeah.
So when this all happened down there and they started, you know, they didn't really move too much earth. But the first thing you do on any site like that where you know you're going to move earth is just to go in and put some erosion control down. I mean, it's a very simple procedure. But they didn't, and they kept pushing this whole issue. So I know Bernie isn't on the line tonight, Bernie De Felice. He had to go to another meeting, but his concern was exactly what you're talking about here. Now, I sent a letter to the inspection group and asked them about, you know, can somebody go out there and see if there's erosion control out there? And that was probably three, four days ago. I got a call back from Jackie Anderson, I believe it is, the coordinator. She said, I know, she said, I know you're concerned. She said, I'm, I'm supposed to go out and make an inspection out there. I said, well, Jackie, why hasn't anybody enforced putting something down from the very beginning? When they, when they first moved an ounce of dirt? And she said, no, I understand. I'm going out there. Now, I don't know what has transpired, but I know some erosion control equipment has been brought on, you know, for, for certain erosion controls. And I think it's been put down. But somebody, I heard that somebody put a cease and desist on it in the town to, to put that down. Now, I don't know who, who's under control here, but I don't know if you've talked to Conservation Commission, but I guess this sounds like it's in light with, with the planning board, all right? The, the same issue is coming up. So we're, we're looking at that as a group around here. And we're saying to ourselves, if this is the way they're going to treat a simple procedure like this and knowing that they have to move dirt, all these other things which has nothing to do with you, with the ZBA and the border health and all those different issues that come up, as well as a building inspector. What is actually being done out there with nobody watching anything? That, that's another concern. So when you say that you can put a cease and desist on the construct, I don't think you can put it on the whole site. I think you can only put it on for earth moving operations that will impact. I'm, I'm not sure of that, but I think that's the way it goes. Because the building inspector, I think, is the only one who can put a cease and desist on construction.
Right. You're quite right. Our jurisdiction is simply alter, land alteration.
Right.
That's what it is.
Exactly.
So any alteration of the land comes under our jurisdiction unless. Uh, and that's why I want to make it really clear, you know, we have no authority over anything else. And we're not commenting on any other aspect of this project.
So I would, I would say, you know, checking with Jackie Anderson to make sure, you know, what she's done. And then knowing what you want and they haven't put, you know, and this is the way it's been. We've got three different, four different site plans. One for the Board of Health, uh, one for the Building Department. They got one for, for your, uh, your, uh, Planning Board. And they had another one, uh, ZBA was another one. And I think if you take all four of them and put them together, they're not the same plan. Uh, so it's very confusing to us and, and we're trying to work with Paul. He's came, he came to our meeting here at the site and at our, you know, uh, facility here at, at two eighty-one Raleigh Bridge Road. And we had a, a discussion with him, we told him our concerns, what our concerns were. And he must not have a clerk of the work out there that's controlling it, a manager. And everybody's doing their own thing. So that's where we are right now. And I know, I know Kurt has a, has some concerns, I mean, he's the abbot there. And he's had a lot of concerns on them moving dirt around. And they've got holes in the ground that are, some of them are like eight feet deep. And I don't know why, because they're in the area where the septic system is supposed to be going in. So the disturbing area that's not supposed to be disturbed by the Board of Health. So that, yeah.
May I say something? Oh, sure. I live next door and um, we have been watching them bring in dirt for quite a while. This is not something new. We've watched them dig big holes, then fill them, this stone they've dropped off. And what's that trucking company that was coming and dropping off loads and loads? What was the name of it?
Forget.
Someplace, they were coming in with trailer trucks full.
They, they were bringing.
So this is not new, this has been going on for months and months. And we kept saying, what are they digging? What are they digging? And then they'll fill it in and then they put more, there's been piles over there. So.
Yeah, and that, 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 all that, if all the dirt that was coming in was coming in from Danbus when they were putting the new water lines in Danbus.
Not all of it.
Well, there's a big, big, a lot of it that I saw. But anyways, they, they were using that as a laydown area for their construction. And then when their construction was over, they just left everything there. And those people took it over.
Oh, they left all that dirt for them to use?
Yes.
But what, there were other trucks.
That was contaminated dirt. No, a lot of it was excavated from just the streets from the.
It was hot top.
Yeah.
There was hot top and cement in it. And they proceeded to dig holes and bury the hot top and the cement.
It went mute, how come it went mute?
He went mute.
Did you go mute?
You're mute.
Yeah, that, that's been going on for months.
Yes, and so, and but we did see truckloads of dirt that wasn't from Danbus. They dumped it, then they used the backhoe and stuff to level it and put it out there. So this has been going on for months.
Right, well, we have been trying to get them to pay attention for months. Um, and uh, so we've gotten to this point.
Hey, Martha, you, you had asked John if he could confirm that uh, he was present when a warning was given to the uh, you know, the, the engineer or the owner.
No, no, he wasn't present when the warnings were given. Uh, but the topic, my understanding is that the topic of stormwater uh, application and uh, all came up in.
That was the ZBA.
But um, also uh, elsewhere and that uh, people were reassured that it was all being taken care of. Um, but it's not.
Madam Chair, can I just add or answer one question that both Greg and Zilly had and about the timeframe of, of when the developer was spoken to about this? And um, Permit Link is the communication vehicle from all departments to the developer. And there was a trail with dates and comments. And September second, I formally put in um, informing them that they were going to need a stormwater permit. We had had multiple discussions earlier than that and subsequent to that. But right in Permit Link, which the developer sees, is a comment, September second, that says you need to um, obtain a stormwater permit.
Yeah, I just, I think they just, there's nobody managing it. I mean, they're in there, all of, all the different uh, plumbers and electricians, they're all in doing their thing, but nobody, it, it appears that nobody's managing what's going on there, so.
And has anybody, for the earth moving part, which we're talking, you know, just, just about that one? Has anybody, thank you for that, Lynn. Has anybody specifically gone up, said to the owners, please stop moving dirt, you don't have author permission to do that? Just verbally, that directly? Like, it sounds like you've reached out to them to try to get them to show up here to have a conversation.
Let me just say something about that, I'm an engineer, all right? I've done a lot of site work, I've done a lot of development. And first of all, the, the chain of command doesn't go that way. When people come in from the abutters, the contractors are out there working, somebody comes up and tells you, you know, what are you doing with this dirt? You know, I, I don't have to answer you, I, I, I'm on the, I'm working for somebody on the property. There should be somebody that's managing the property where you can go to. We brought this up with Paul. Bernie brought it up at the meeting with Paul, so Paul knows about it. But Paul.
So forgive me, John, I was trying to understand if anyone from the town who either is worked, working for or, uh, you know, an official of the town has spoken directly with the manager or owner of the property and said the words, you may not, not a cease and desist, like, but the same words that a cease and desist would have. Has anyone, I'm, I'm asking Martha, if anyone who's um, from the town has said that.
Well, I can, I can tell you this, we have been trying to handle this in our usual polite, nice, topsfield way. We have um, informed, we have requested information.
Like specifically, I, I'm asking very specifically about the dirt moving part.
The town administrator to deal with this and he has said that he has. Now, with all of that in mind, um, no one's listening.
Okay.
Also, silly, I mean, by, by telling them they need a stormwater permit, which they should know anyway, that is saying, stop moving the dirt. That's the whole point.
Yeah, thank you. I mean, I, I think that I'm, well, I don't know that, I, I don't, I'm not, I'm coming from a place of, I don't want to assume that anyone, like, I might not understand that if I was myself, if I was just trying to do something, I might not understand that I need a stormwater permit means I can't move dirt on my own property.
Oh, of course.
I mean, I think that's what we're doing here, though. I mean, a cease and desist, it sounds very formal and mean, but that's what we're doing is we're telling them to stop it and get a permit.
Yeah, I appreciate you guys entertaining my questions. As, for those of you who aren't on the planning board, you know, I'm kind of the newbie on here, I'm still learning as they go. I like to ask a lot of questions if I don't know, so that way, it's also helpful, I think, for the public, like, if this is revisited in the future and if we're told, you know, sometimes we hear Tulsa has a reputation of not being business friendly or this or that or the other. You know, now we've had this whole conversation that this is about a very specific request that was made months ago that's being ignored.
Zilly, Zilly, the, the other thing that, that nobody's seeing here is that you had, they have at least three engineers, I know they have one site engineer. They had one person that did the septic system. There's enough engineers or consultants involved in this site that I cannot believe to this day that nobody has said to the owners, you have to do a water, you know, a stormwater permit, you have to do erosion control, you gotta get that out there and get it done. And kept their mouth shut. If they did, then the client is controlling the engineers and the engineers should be controlling the client. So I just can't believe that as many as I've seen professionals stamped on these plans haven't said anything to him, especially like on the septic system. I mean, that's, that's a given.
Well, one of the requests that they, one of the things that they had to deal with, with their septic plan was the fact that they didn't have any stormwater uh, included on the plan initially. And so uh, the septic review person went back to the septic engineer and said, where's the stormwater? You know, where, what are you doing with stormwater? Uh, so there was something put on.
So they haven't had a, a stamp on that?
Was that?
From the Board of Health, so, so it sounds like they have not had a, a go-ahead stamp from the Board of Health, correct?
Yes, they have, they're all set, they're ready.
They have, okay.
They have an approved set of plans from the Board of Health.
Yeah.
And on those plans, it shows a catch basin with a pipe going down to a, an apron, a, a stone apron out in the northwest, northwest corner of the property. That's it for drainage.
Like everything's in northwest.
Nobody's addressed what's gonna be on the parking lot. Is it gonna be pavement? Is it gonna be gravel? Is it, you know, that all, that's been brought up. I've been there for, for, I've been there for the town manager, all right? And at least twice, and that was brought up with him and it was also brought up with Paul, the owner. So uh, uh, this is way over.
The, the stormwater, water with respect to the septic is, is how stormwater impacts the septic system, right? Not stormwater, as in our job.
Yes, stormwater, no, stormwater relating to your job. That's what they put on the septic tank.
And that's just, so everyone knows, the uh, septic plan has some stormwater management features for something. The plan that.
But that's not.
That's not what Joe, as far as calculations.
There, we don't have any calculations, we have nothing. Uh, there's nothing about roof runoff, there's nothing. The plan that went to the ZBA shows rain gardens somehow or another in the parking lot and around the parking lot. Uh, the most recent one that we got that is so totally different has uh, trenches, you know, some kind of trenching system for a stormwater collection. So, you know, three different engineers, architects, three different approaches. And nothing that actually accounts for all of the stormwater because we don't have any calculations and we don't know how much stormwater that they have to handle. Um, so I think the question here is, um, uh, I mean, it, this is, we've never had to do anything like this before. You know, we, we've just never had to confront a developer who is simply ignoring the fact that he needs a permit. Um, so it's hard, I think, for all of us to, you know, to deal with this. Um, but uh, my sense is that uh, board members are interested in seeing a cease and desist.
I am, but if, I just, I would just add that I spoke up in support of this project when they first came to us with the project idea. I mean, I, I, you know, I, keeping the, the property as a more or less agricultural interest, um, even though it, talking about other functions, um, I thought was exciting. And it's a, it's a business that we'd like the town to benefit from. But that's not a rubber stamp to just do what you wanna do. So I, I think we should write, AC, if, if it's the planning board's jurisdiction to do so, I think we should do that.
Who's the lucky duck that gets to deliver it?
I'd be happy to do that.
Well, here, we have a letter, uh, a letter has been drafted. Uh, I was hoping that we could deal with this, you know, uh, more informally to get them to stop until they could get a permit, but we can't talk to them. Uh, so there is a letter that is drafted that is very complete. Our issue is to whom to send it, you know?
Yeah, if there's no project engineer on site or, you know, project manager on site.
You see, Mr. Don Hauser and Mr. Workman are partners in some of the entities. Now, some of the plans were prepared largely for Mr. Don Hauser. The most recent plan that we got was prepared for Mr. Workman. So I'm kind of, and they are partners in the Alfalfa Farm LLCs and they are partners in the Essex Cellaring, I think. I'm thinking, uh, but I would need guidance, that this letter should go to both of them.
Both of them, yeah.
I agree.
Because these are the different entities that are active, you know?
Excuse me, the owner of the property is on the building permit. And that's in um, Watertown. There's an address there to Watertown and that's for Dawn. I know it's for, for uh, Paul, I'm sorry, for Paul. That's an, that's an address there. And that's on the building permit, so you should really send, I don't care if you hand it to him, but it really should be sent by registered mail.
Oh, well, of course, of course.
Absolutely.
By certified registered mail and all of that. Uh, the, uh, some of these entities, you know, I'm, I was looking at the plans that were submitted to different boards. And for whom was the plan prepared? And as different plans are prepared for different of these entities, uh, the common feature is that both Paul uh, and Brian are partners, you know, in these. Now, many of the entities have an address of two sixty-seven Raleigh Bridge Road. Now, I don't know that they're getting mail there. I mean, at the house, I don't know. Um, but there is a Emmett Enterprises owns the property and they're uh, based, I think, in Watertown. There's another uh, operation based in Waltham. I mean, so, you know, we have to figure out to whom this should be sent and at what address.
Well, shouldn't it be, shouldn't?
You're muted, John.
It should be the owner of record, but I think we should just send it to everybody and copy all the engineers.
No, and, and I'm saying the owner of record is shown in the, in the registry of deeds and that's the Watertown address.
Right.
Send it there, but I'd also send it to Raleigh Bridge Road and then I would copy all the engineers.
Uh, the building permit, however, was pulled by Essex Cellaring.
So to Jenny's point, just send it to everybody.
Emmett Enterprises did not pull the building permit. It was the, the Essex roaring people.
And I would send it registered mail and regular mail.
Oh, both? Why both?
Because you can, you can say no thank you to registered mail.
Oh, okay. Gotcha, interesting.
Well, we can sort out the, the details, um, but the, the letter that has been produced essentially tells them that they have to stop all earth moving um, until such time as they have a stormwater permit in hand.
Madam Chair, there's one open question, which is the, uh, submit the application within blank number of business days in the letter.
Oh, yeah, we need to give them a deadline. And what is a reasonable deadline?
Well, how long does our consultant need to review a plan before our next meeting?
It depends on the complexity, if he even has a plan to work with, you know? But we do need to uh, have, you know, some kind of response by a certain date, yes?
Do, do we, I mean, it's their loss if they don't do it by a certain date, but maybe since we know our meeting dates, to, like Jenny said, how long does our consultant need? If we pick like, a time that's two weeks before, not our next meeting, but the following? I don't know, I'm just.
I would do, I mean.
As the chair said, it depends on what comes in. If it, if it's an incomplete plan, he's going to look it all over, get back to them and say, this thing's incomplete. And there's a lot of back and forth.
Yeah.
You know, it's undertaken. If it's a complete plan, he can review it in under a week. But often that's not the case, it takes weeks of going back and forth with the other engineer.
Why don't they submit a plan within ten days, business days?
I, I would, actually, I was gonna say that because not to sound punitive, they've known that they've had to do this and with plenty of time to actually put together a comprehensive pa- plan. Uh, it hasn't been done. You, I, I would even feel comfortable saying a week, but I like ten days better.
And I think they demonstrate that their erosion control that they just put down today is uh, adequate within, within a shorter period of time.
Well, by the way, one of the items in the letter is um, temporary erosion and sedimentation controls.
Right.
You know, and I don't know that we need to do that now if Conscom has done it.
But I would, I would know that they, they would actually, they're actually adequate. I want them to.
Great, yes, Kirk, you have something to say?
Yeah, I do, uh, where they have no plan in place for the water, you know, stormwater runoff. Oh, how, how do they get a height level of the land? Cause they've brought in so much fill now. They've raised the, the level of dirt of foot to two feet in certain areas. That's got to affect the stormwater runoff.
Oh, well, it will, and the plan that they're supposed to produce is the existing conditions. That is the original contours, you know, of the property. And that we have off our town maps and. And then they're supposed to produce the proposed contours, uh, and that, and if you look at the plans carefully, you can see that there are many feet of fill, uh, being built up in order to create those terrorist parking lots that they show. But that is the proposed, um, the proposed contours, the proposed shape of the land is what they then determine how the water is going to behave and how the, the runoff is going to be managed. But that requires, you know, the calculations, you know, what is it that they're trying to manage? But anyway, do we still put in the issue of, um?
I would. I just, you know, I'm not. I'm, I'm concerned about the amount of fill that they have and the fact that we don't know where it came from.
Yeah.
One big storm and it's going all over the place. And, you know, I don't know if they've got a little tiny sock out there to try and prevent a wall of dirt. Or if they put tarps over it too, or they've got, you know? I'd like to know that it's adequate for what they actually put that there.
I honestly would like to know where the fill is coming from.
Yes.
I, I know that if, if they were getting it from like a Bentley Warren, uh, Bentley Warren, you know, checks, you know, and, and sort of, you know, they are doing the, you know, monitoring of what the fill is. But if this fill is coming from random construction projects here, there, and everywhere, you know, no one is monitoring it. No one is testing it, uh, to determine, you know, what it contains. I know that they did have a massive pile of, uh, asphalt uh, that came from the pavement that they tore up in front of the building. And some of it was loose, uh, but there were big chunks of asphalt in it, and you can't use that as fill. But then I was told by a, a neighbor that they hauled a lot of it away to someplace. We don't know where, but there still was a pile of chunks of asphalt left there. And I don't know whether they're just buried under the existence of spill that they brought in. So I, I do think we need some answers about that, and that that does come within our, our purview of the land alteration. Okay, but if we can get back to deadlines, um, we're asking within a certain number of business days, file a complete storm water management permit application.
I suggest days for that.
What would you say, Jenny?
I suggest ten, ten days.
Okay, we can do ten. Now, um, I honestly believe that, uh, the board should see the letter. Lynn, can you put it up? I mean, cause I don't want someone coming back and saying, oh, well, the board never saw the letter.
And looking at the forecast, I would say they need to demonstrate to us by Friday that the erosion controls are adequate.
Is adequate.
Because we've got rain predicted for Sunday and Monday.
Is Friday or is it Friday?
This Friday.
This Friday.
Secure that site.
Um, and Madam Chair, if I could just mention too, it was mentioned about, um, Jackie going out there and the erosion control. As she stated many times, she is only concerned about the land that is under or within jurisdiction that is wetlands. So she's probably looking at some kind of, you know, buffer to ensure that the wetlands don't have an issue. I don't know that she's looking at any other parts of that property for erosion control.
Okay, folks, you can take your time to read it.
Leave the nod when you're ready for me to scroll.
I'm good.
So that's true. A single comprehensive and consistent site plan is a requirement?
Yes, thank you, thank you for including that.
Wonder what spell check thinks permittees does.
Doesn't know the word. It's the correct spelling. It doesn't recognize.
Yeah, word doesn't.
I don't think many people, yeah, would know what it is.
Sometimes humans are smarter than AI.
The one thing you may want to do is you may want to mention both addresses. Two sixty seven, two forty nine, because that's been interchangeable. They call it two sixty seven, AKA two forty nine. That was brought up a couple of times.
So I'm wondering if, I'll provide a plan and photographic confirmation of installation within. I'm wondering if where it says sufficient to prevent, do you want to? Jenny, what you were talking about earlier, do you want to say like that you need to demonstrate that it's sufficient or just leave it as is and just give a deadline?
Yeah, that's a good idea. Say demonstrate that.
Cause that's kind of objective or subjective, objective, subjective.
Install, maintain, and demonstrate that.
And where is that going?
Somewhere in, in two, temporary erosion and sedimentation controls. Install and maintain appropriate erosion and sedimentation controls.
Install, comma, maintain, and verify.
Sure.
By whatever means we decide.
And at the end, provide a plan and photographic confirmation of, um.
Uh, uh, of the working order or the.
Efficient, you know, or, or installation of sufficient erosion controls within, I would say, two business days.
I mean, but, I mean, they're not going to receive this until Friday or Saturday, so your Friday date is really not gonna.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, we can also email it, but. We have their email, right?
Yes.
I mean, heck, we can hand deliver it, but.
Yeah.
So number three, that's where we're saying within ten business days?
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, do we want to reiterate the comprehensive plan here?
Well, the application itself, you know, the requirement for the application, you know, the major thing is a plan, you know?
Is, is, is the comprehensive plan?
Yeah.
That's okay. So ne- never mind. Thank you.
And by the way, just, I hate to distract you. The reason that you need a comprehensive plan, um, is that, um, it is a common plan of development according to our rules and regulations. Now, common plans of development cannot be parcelled, you know, turned into smaller projects to be done in phases, uh, to avoid, you know, going through the storm water. You know, that if you know, if you know you're altering 10,000 square feet, you can't say, oh, well, I'm just going to do 400 square feet over here. And then maybe a little later I'll do, you know, 5,000 square feet over there. The common plan of development has to show everything that is intended for the development of the project.
Is number four typically part of the process or is it something? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I, I mean, this is, um, you know, there is a whole process of inspections, you know, that's supposed to take place and, um, you know, relative to advanced notice, you know, for the construction of the components.
One through five here is like, is basically highlighting portions of the bylaw.
As, as we don't do this that many, that often, Martha, is it appropriate for us to uh, even have a team visit, you know, to their site?
Well, we don't really have the authority to go on to their site at this point, uh, as far as I know. Uh, I've been, I've been, uh, watching from the road, um, and I, so I wouldn't, I frankly wouldn't do that.
Well, until after they file.
Who, who will be doing the inspections then?
We'll have to have our, um, consulting engineer do the, do the inspections. This is all going to be, it has to be paid for as part of the storm water fee.
Right. And, and we're not authorized to go on site with the engineers to do an inspection?
Oh, once, once they do the application, and Jenny, correct me if I'm wrong. Once they put in an application and they go through the whole process, then the town, you know, the planning board and its representatives, the engineer have the right to, um, review what's going on. That's how I understand it. But prior to any application, uh, or any correspondence with them that, you know, indicates that they're planning to do something, we just can't walk onto their property.
And, and we've done site visits before on other properties.
Right. Once we get the.
Once we get the application.
At the application.
Who's the number? Six one seven number?
Me.
That's what I thought. Okay. The planning is you, the, you know? Thank you. The part about the non-compliance, I mean, I guess I'm just curious what we're able to really do.
Per the previous comment, do we want to list both addresses? I'll reference.
Yes.
Yeah, I think it would be a good idea to do two forty nine dash two sixty seven. I think that's what it is. Uh, wherever we mention the address. Because initially, when, when this whole project, even before this project was in effect, when they were, uh, the family was planning to, um, you know, to sell it, uh, I mentioned to the ConsCon agent, some previous decisions that the Conservation Commission had made. And she hadn't seen them because they were in the, the other address, the file for the other address for Alfalfa Farm. So it is a good idea to include both.
Zilly, to answer your question, those enforcement provisions are from the bylaw, so.
Like realistically, I'm just curious what that looks like, but.
Well.
Like, I'm just imagining, so 10 days go by and they haven't done it, what happens?
We start sending Lynn out with.
Well, uh, honestly, um.
I'll go with you, Lynn.
Yeah, we'll send Lynn out.
Is there an option?
I didn't know if I should stop sharing or if you want to see another section at all. You're good.
I'm, I'm good.
All good?
Thank you.
So everyone's read it, um, and changes have been made, you know, suggestions have been made. And I, maybe this will get their attention, you know?
Yeah, my thought, like, just to put, since we've put already so much time into this conversation, I just want to say, that like, I, like Steve, you know, the concept of the place is something I liked, like still. But it's just like, I kind of go back to like parenting one O one, like, but you had your chance, like, we've communicated the expectation and you have not met it. And so there's a consequence, like, it seems like just a natural consequence of not following through on an expectation. It's fair and appropriate. So thank you for helping me understand all that. Because I don't know, like, if the 10 days go by and I also don't like, you know, saying, well, and if, like, what's the consequence after 10 days? If, if it's not, if we don't really know, I'm just gonna say this out loud and you guys can be like, Zilly, enough, we're moving on. Let's vote on it and get to the next agenda item. But would it be appropriate to say, within 10 days, to either have submitted a full application or have submitted something with a very specific, like, request for an extension? If they have something that they're almost done with, like, if this wakes them up and they get working on it, but they can't meet the 10 days, like, if there's a that's not really a second chance, it's like the fifth chance, but built in so that we're not faced with the situation where now we're they haven't met the deadline and we have to enforce something and we're not prepared to fully enforce.
Well, I think at the point, if they don't meet the deadline, um, of 10 business days, uh, then, uh, we can say, all right, why, you know? That when do you think, what stage are you at? I mean, we're, we're reasonable people. I mean, we're not, you know, we'll, we'll try and make this happen. The idea is to get a plan and an application. And so we can discuss it with them, and if they, uh, persist in ignoring all of this, then we have all of these various, you know, approaches that we can do.
So let me ask it this way. Oh, go ahead, Jenny.
I was just gonna say, I should add that the 10 days is not the only, you know, thing. We send a cease and desist and they just continue to.
That's different.
Dirt on there.
That's different.
You know, so that's why, you know, we may, we have the discretion to enforce our bylaw.
Yeah.
Or not.
So I guess that's, I was actually just gonna say, I see it at two parts, like, if they continue to disregard and move dirt, that's one thing. That's like, okay, now you're being jerks. Now you're just plain old being jerks. But if they struggle to meet the 10 day deadline, I guess I'm just wondering if it could be, you have 10 days to submit the full application or to submit a letter with your specific, like, a with a reason why you can't meet the deadline and then what, when can we expect you to meet it? So that instead of it being like, we didn't meet it. Okay. Well, then when are you going? Like, do you know, I don't know if I'm making sense.
Well, I think the point is this, that if, after they receive this letter, if they continue to move dirt and they continue to pile dirt up and they just ignore us altogether, uh, then we have to take action. But if they stop moving the dirt and then come back and say, you know, we can't possibly in 10 days do all of the calculations that we should have done six months ago. And we can't possibly do all of this work, you know, within 10 days, then I think we can say, okay, just don't move the dirt around, you know?
So that's where I'm like with my, it, it's sort of like to be as clear as we can on our side, like, if we're going to say, give us a full application within 10 days, I would rather say, give us a full application or a letter of.
I respectfully disagree. I think, I think that's muddying the waters. I think, I think it's up to the applicant, um, and this is coming from, I, I think in my, my years and years of working in education. I mean, we're not teaching elementary school kids or high school kids or even college or grad students here. We're supposed to be working with professionals and, uh, they have a responsibility, not only to, if, if there's a third owner or a property owner, but to the community that they're doing the work in. I think a very strong, a very one-sided letter that says, look, you've been warned, we're done. This has to happen. If they come back and say, oh, okay, you know, you're right, um, but I need more time. I'm, I'm with Martha. I like the good.
They, they can ask, yeah.
Yeah, I like to be the good neighbor and to be the helpful neighbor, um, but I don't want to give them an out in writing upfront.
I, I agree with you, Steve.
Yeah. And to be clear, I wasn't like, I wasn't suggesting an out with like the not continuing work without a permit. I was just, I don't, I don't like the idea of like giving a deadline and then saying, okay, actually we can extend it. I was trying to build that in, but what you're saying is. I was trying to build that in, but what you're saying is, these are grownups who can say, ten days is too fast, can we please have two weeks? And then we can, yeah, we can leave that in their hands.
The first goal here is to get them to stop moving the dirt. And stabilizing the site. I mean, that's really what we're trying to do. And.
Appreciate that.
And, and then, then they can't do anything until they get a permit, right?
Yes, thank you. I feel like you guys have been very patient with me. Someone can make a motion.
Zilly, we love you, we love your compassion.
Okay, who wants to make the motion to send the cease and desist letter as amended? To Mr. Gunhauser and Mr. Workman.
I will make that motion.
Second.
And Jenny seconded it. Okay, Zilly?
Hi.
Jenny?
Hi.
Greg?
Hi.
Steve?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Okay, so we'll see what happens. Okay, any other comments? I see another, a butter just joined. Hi, Scott. Scott Weatherby is right across the street and is also familiar with the industry. Okay, are we all done with this?
For now.
For now, yeah, for now. Anyway. I, I guess that's it. So now we're moving on to possible zoning bylaw modifications. And I have one that I'd like to add, you know, Lynn, can you put it up? And it's a direct result of what we're seeing. Our conference and event facility use. Was based on the Ipswich Greater State bylaw. It was, its purpose was to try and funding to alternate uses for historic. Structures. It was never intended that it would be for. You know, you know, concerts, outdoor concerts. It was never intended that it be used for events for which tickets were sold. That what I've added here. Makes it what it was supposed to be for. But now we have this tent. Asking for a conference and event facility permit. And Condamara, of course, has a conference and event facility permit for a tent. To be sure, at Condamara, there is an historic building, you know, that is there, that is preserved in part. Because of the use of the property, but Alfalfa, you know, they tore all the historic buildings down. So I would not like to see other locations in Topsfield. Coming forward, asking to have tents and outdoor entertainment facilities and all of that sort of thing. Being, you know, getting conference and event facility permits. So this is my suggestion. Jenny, I can't hear you at all.
I said that makes sense to me.
Yeah, I mean. The Commons and Pierce Farm were, are two conference and event facility per, you know, facilities. And that's what this use was designed for. It, it was never designed for some new structure, like a tent or, or, you know, something like that.
So is this, is this something that exists, the part that's in black?
Yeah, that's the definition in our zoning bylaw, conference and event facility. The red track change is what I am recommending.
So what happens for places that are not in a historic building?
Well, then they become simply non-conforming uses.
Existing ones, not new ones.
Correct, right.
So Martha, it's still possible for them to get approval to do it in a more modern building. It's just that it would be non-conforming. Is that right?
No, that it has to be in an historic building, and that's defined in our bylaw as one essentially on the significant structure list. Of Topsfield. So it means that any, anything that is an historic building, well, for instance, good folks, that's an historic building. It's being used as a conference and event facility. It's small, it's a very small operation, but it is an historic building. Now, you may want to think about this, revise it, change it. But I, I really worry that, that we might see other properties. That aren't historic at all, but they have a lot of land and that, you know, we know of one on Holland Street. That they'll come along and say, oh, I want to put a big tent and I want to run concerts and I want to run this and run that. In my tent. And I don't think that this, this bylaw, this definition or this use was never designed to be an outdoor. Entertainment center.
I, I think this worrying change really clarifies that, Martha, thank you. I think, I think they're good, good changes.
Well, thank you. Well, we'll see what the ZBA has to say about it and what implications they see that maybe. I, I wasn't thinking about, but I, I think it really needs to be clarified.
Zilly, you're on mute.
Thank you for noticing that I was talking. You mentioned the Commons, that's an example?
Yes.
Is, so would this mean that they can't use a tent outside?
Well.
This is an example to understand.
What? I, I toyed around with the idea of adding that ancillary. Or minimal outdoor activities, you know, something along those lines to cover the side.
Or like Gold Barn. Gold Barn is another one.
Uh, but they're not a conference and event facility. They're a museum.
Oh, okay. So, full disclosure, my wedding was at the Commons. And it was newly, a functioning, function hall, and we had dinner outside under a tent. And then went back inside. Ceremony inside, dinner outside under a tent, and then went back inside for the party.
But that tent on the, on the.
On the side.
That was on the Lopez property.
Right next to it, be- before.
Before you get into the next property?
Yeah.
The side of the building? Well, wouldn't that just come up, or associated accommodations for food? Oh, no, food preparation.
No. The, the original arrangement at the Commons was that the Lopez's put up a big tent. On their front lawn. And that activities happened there and activities happened in the Commons building. There was a falling out between the Lopez's and the Commons, and they stopped using the tent. So now they're, they use the side garden.
Yeah.
Ceremony.
Yeah. Anyway, I, I brought it up as an example, just to understand, like, the impact.
Well, it's something to think about because. I think, and I don't think any neighbors would have any problem with minor use of outdoor space. At one of these historic structures, for instance. The side lawn of the Commons, you know, sometimes they use it for a cocktail party before the. That we, we certainly could include something that would empower the permitting authority. To allow for some, you know, some outdoor activity. But it would have to be something that wouldn't overpower the use of the structure itself. And I'm not quite sure of how to deal, do that.
Okay.
But I, I, I agree with you that, you know, there is reason for them to do some outdoor stuff. I mean, for instance, at Willowdale, you know, they have the patio. Now, they're not permitted by us, but they do have the patio that they use, you know, for parts of their activities. And their things and, and all. But, you know, we really need to make, make it clear that an historic building is involved in this. That that's the purpose of this use. Okay, Lynn, what else do we have in the way of zoning?
Issue of the three-car garage, let me just. I, we passed over to the ZBA chair just to get some initial thoughts before having a joint meeting to discuss all the zoning. And he had some interesting points. He said, because what they were requesting is the storage of commercial vehicles. Six point oh four is not applicable, it's six point oh two. And he believes that there should be a size limit for an accessory building. He was proposing ten to maybe fifteen percent to the ground floor area of the principal building, so that they were not oversized.
No, that's a good approach.
Yeah. And it was commercial vehicles after all, because we were made to believe. That there was not commercial vehicles, but now we know.
Yeah, well, back, actually, when you guys were talking about it, we were talking about six point oh four, and he said, that only applies to commercial, and that's not.
Oh, okay, other way around.
So it's six point oh two.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, and in that case, it was over the height limitation, so it would have required a variance. They have not come forward for it. But he said there is no square foot size limit if an accessory is in the appropriate part of the yard and not in the setback. And I think this is a problem. So he recommended the ten to fifteen percent to throw out there for. An appropriate dimensional limitation.
Okay.
And, and he also said, because it would be a dimensional limitation, it also allows for variances. Where regulation as a use would not. So that's why he also thought it should be a dimensional. Limitation.
I like it.
Good.
And, and the fifteen percent is on the main structure, so, okay.
I have no concept of what that feels like size-wise, but go on.
I'm sorry, he said of the ground floor area. So it's not taking both floors and adding it all up. He was saying the ground floor. So if you visually look, it's only fifteen percent of the size of that ground floor.
Yeah.
Okay, what else have we got?
That's interesting.
Yeah, I, I, I don't, I don't see how that could possibly, I mean. Typically, a, a ground floor would be maybe. I mean, let's just say forty by forty-ish, so sixteen hundred. So fifteen percent would be two hundred and twenty-five square feet. I mean, that, you can't possibly put a three-car garage in that. So I, I would suggest that it's, that we allow a larger amount, right? I mean.
If you could go gross floor area instead of floor.
Yeah, if you use the gross floor area, that that would be very different.
Yeah, but I mean, I, I think a typical. Two-car garage would be like two hundred and twenty-five to two hundred and fifty square feet, so I, I think people would need at least, you know. Three hundred and fifty, four hundred square feet. To do a three-car garage.
So if that fifteen percent, someone do the math.
Seems small.
Well, you see, what usually happens is that, now, these are accessory buildings, okay? That if someone's building a house and they want a three-car garage, you know, they, it's part of the house. They build it all as one entity, and there really are no restrictions that I'm aware of. This is for freestanding buildings that would be used as garages. So there is a difference. I mean, so there are plenty of places with three-car garages, you know, in town. This really, whatever the dimension is that we decide on, is going to be for a freestanding structure.
Um, accessory dwelling units, right, is a, can be a free standing.
Right.
Structure now, and that's limited, is that nine hundred square feet you decided on? What was it, nine? Was it?
Nine hundred.
I'm just trying to think about, just thinking for that as an example of something else that you might build.
And I was just crunching some numbers, you know, typically, well, I won't say typically. I would use a garage for not only a vehicle, but for other things, maybe a small workbench. If, if I was, if I were building a garage, I don't think, even a single-car garage. I don't think I'd build anything less than ten by twenty-four. Which gives me a few, few extra feet beyond, a, a normal car is like twenty feet.
Yep.
So, and that's, so that's.
One little car with barely any extra.
Well, exactly. So we're looking at two hundred and forty, maybe two hundred and fifty square feet per vehicle. Right, so that brings us up to seven fifty if we're looking at a three-car garage. That's just some quick numbers on my end. And so it, it, that's why this is interesting.
Yeah.
It's an interesting approach.
Zilly, can I just make one clarification when you mentioned about the ADU? These are accessory buildings. That's different than an accessory dwelling unit, so whatever you define here would not impact ADUs.
Right, I think I was trying to think about, because I'm not good at like, numbers and spatial, like, if you ask me how many people were at a party, I'm like. I'm not good at guessing. So just when you said fifteen percent, I was trying to think like, what does that square footage look like? So as an example of something else somebody might build on their lot. Now, you know, a nine hundred square foot ADU or a two hundred square foot garage. I know we're not going two hundred square feet, but if it's a percentage of us, yeah, it feels a little funny to do it as a percentage for that reason.
Well, and, and, for example, my house is very small. And my first floor is, you know, a little more than a thousand square feet. So it's, I'd be looking at a teeny tiny garage based on a, a ten percent. Of that first floor square footage.
Right.
And it, it's an interesting approach. I, I, I don't think just slapping a percentage though on there, I think we should, we need to.
Do you guys think that we, if we do like, option of like, whichever is larger or whichever, yeah, whichever is larger. Either X number square feet or percentage of. Primary residents. I'm just thinking out loud now, you know.
No, I. Is, is that bringing it in, into a matter of aesthetic? I mean, and, and that's, I, I'm not sure that's something we can regulate. As a body.
We still have to meet the requirements of fitting it in the yard.
Well, I think one of the issues is what exactly is a commercial vehicle? I mean, are we talking about three dump trucks or are we talking about three box trucks?
Or a small food truck.
But wasn't the idea to, to take, to, to regulate, to come up with a way that's regulating it regardless of what type of vehicle?
Yeah, well, that's, you know, that's part of it, but when there are, that we're just trying to focus on the size of a structure. For commercial vehicles, three commercial vehicles, and I don't know that someone's gonna be. You know. Sure, I, so I'm not sure. I mean, I like the idea of doing it as a percentage of the, the size of the house. Because that gives some scale, you know, that the, the new building doesn't overpower the house. But I think that we do have to refine the numbers a little bit more.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, if, if the house is relatively modest in size, it's gonna put severe restrictions on. The size of a normal-sized garage, and also if the property is quite big, right, and there's trees and things like that. I mean, you know, having a, you know, using Steve's calculation, seven hundred and fifty square feet for a normal. You know, three-car garage with some storage, you know, on a two-acre lot is really not gonna look out of place, right?
And didn't we talk a little bit about defining garage and barn? So I, I, I bring that up because, hey, okay, if I can't build a garage, maybe I can build a barn.
Right, right.
Well, the accessory building. Well, the accessory building, uh, in, in the other use, the six point oh two is an accessory building. And that that would cover, um, you know, things other than garages. Uh, but they are also, uh, for instance, my barn, um. I don't think could be built under today's standards because of the height. You know, that accessory buildings have a height limitation.
But it's a beautiful barn, Martha.
Well, yes, I know, it's a beautiful barn, I love my barn, uh, but I'm just saying that the current regulations would not allow. A massive barn like that to be built, but you can build a small barn. You know, a barn that fits within the standard.
May- may- maybe if we say as long as it looks like Martha's barn, you could build it as big.
Well, I don't think you'd want my barn, you know, most of the small lots in town, you know.
No, but.
Just something for us to continue to think about, but what is the, let, let's get the big scope of what we're doing here. We have another suggestion from the CBA, Lynn?
Yes, um, let me. There. Okay, we just had an application come in, um. And I don't know if you guys have seen this yet, it did go out to the department heads. So there are two businesses looking to move into the old Petco location. And one of them is gonna take up half of the first floor and the other one's gonna take the other half of the first floor. So the one um, that uh, on the left side or the more northern side, it's going to be Topsfield Find Food. And so they're going to sell food and they're also going to prepare food that you can order and take out, they're gonna have a limited menu. So there are two permits that they're going to be getting from the ZBA requesting. And one of them was four point oh four, which is retail establishment selling foods. Um, and then the other one is four point one two E, retail specialty foods. And Bob mentioned, because he went to this table to check the legal notice that I wrote to make sure I was putting the right. Um, use codes and everything down there, and, and he noticed that. Um, you know, with me, but if you look at um, three of these. They all have exactly the same permit requirements in three of the districts. So I think it was four point one two B, D, and E. So it doesn't matter if you're any of those three, um, you know, it's always not permitted in the O R A. It's always special permit in the B V, and so he said, we consolidate perhaps. Because now, in the case of the ZBA, they had to go look up the definition for each of these. And it really didn't matter which category they went in, they all needed a special permit, you know, um, so it's kind of. Uh, uh, an extra step and more work, and so, um, he was saying possibly consolidate those. Just something to look at.
It makes sense, um, just so everyone knows, the retail specialty foods. Uh, is, of course, they sell groceries, but they also have takeout, they have, you know, specialty kinds of things. Uh, but retail specialty foods allows for a cafe within the food store. The concept was, you know, an ice cream store, you know, where people would also want to sit or a coffee shop or, you know. That, you know, not so much a coffee shop per se, because that's something different, but um, a bakery. Uh, you know, a bakery that also served tea and coffee and people could sit and have things. So that that's where retail specialty foods came from, um, you know, that was the, the background for it. And I think one thing for us to think about is whether, um, because I seem to remember when this. Was proposed, that one of the reasons for separating it had to do with parking. Parking requirements, the notion being that uh, a regular food store, you know, which was retail. Food store, you know, people are in and out, in and out, but a place that has a cafe. Or is serving food has, you know, longer term parking, I, I think that that was, um. Yeah, the um. Parking requirement, restaurants, snack and non, uh, well, all of the restaurants, full service, limited service. And then snack and not, they have their own requirements. And then um, the, the retail specialty foods. Uh, has a different parking requirement, that is the minimum parking requirement applicable to the primary business. To which such establishment is related, as opposed to the restaurants that, that go by seats. So, you know, the, you know, there is a difference in terms of the parking requirement.
Ties into the other one that you were thinking about a little bit, is incorporating. Uh, they were changing this definition of full service to include some of the. The definition of limited service, because a lot of restaurants now do takeout.
Right.
So, right now you'd have to get full service permit and limited service. So if for some reason you decided to combine those, that would reduce those as well, but that was in the mix as well. Maybe possibly.
We could also, you know, we could simply add takeout to full service to limited service. Um, you know, wherever we needed to, we could add takeout, because that is indeed a. You know, a major part of the restaurant industry, you know, these days. It wasn't when this was all promulgated. But if you're taking notes and you plan to study this, uh, make sure and check the parking requirements for these different types of restaurants. Because they do vary.
And if they have different, would that mean it's better to keep them separate here too?
Yeah, yeah, so. Okay, was there anything else, Lynn?
There was the solar and wind, but we don't think that's gonna be coming um, in time for this.
Uh, which, which one?
The solar and wind bylaw changes.
Do we all know about solar and wind bylaws? You know, the state passed a law, and they've now come up with um. Rules of regulations and um, for solar and wind and for battery storage. Well, we don't have anything about battery storage, um, we do have a solar and we do have a wind bylaw, which we have sent to them. For them to review, um, but uh, personally, uh, they're supposed to be coming up with model bylaws. And all, uh, but, uh, my, and I even said it to the very nice woman who was conducting the meeting. They said, you know, we don't want to do anything until you get your rules and regulations rock solid and in place. Um, and she, she was funny, she said, oh yes, we've all been told that we can't have another. Um, three A debacle, you know, you know, the M B T A communities debacle, so. I don't think we'll get anywhere near that this year. And then there is the historic uh, preservation one, um, that uh, now. M A P C is accepting applications for technical assistance. Um, and we've tossed around the idea of uh, getting M A P C to help us with that historic preservation bylaw. You know, uh, they, they like the idea very much, uh, particularly the housing component. Um, and feel that it could be uh, widely applicable in many communities. You know, that, you know, have historic properties that they would like to save, so. Uh, I guess we're gonna try Lynn, right?
Yeah, that'd be me, right?
I'll, I'll help you.
Um, the first ones are due December eighth. I mean, they're right around the corner, and then, you know, you wait about a month at least to find out. Who they want to go with, and then you'd have to be reaching out to other towns to see who might be interested in. Working with you, so it doesn't seem like this would be something for this A T M. But we could certainly uh, put out the grant application and just keep working on it through the year. Uh, to be ready for following year.
Yeah, if, if we could get a brand, um, it, it would be very helpful and um. And we should reach out to other communities in the area to see if they would be interested in uh. Doing this as kind of a, a regional sort of thing. That is a number of communities showing interest in it, it could be helpful. Uh, but that's not gonna be for this, you know, for this town meeting for sure. Okay, was there anything else, Lynn?
You guys had um, kind of touched on slope bylaw, but I don't think um, most of you are. Too excited about moving forward with that, you needed discussions with the building inspector to see what was covered by the state building code. And whether it was worthwhile moving forward with that one, so that's really preliminary stages.
Yeah.
The other ones you've already talked about, so no need to go through it, um, changing scenic road from special permit, permit. And you just talked about conference and event, I think that, that was everything.
Good. Well, that's good. Okay, so now we can move on to the minutes of October first.
That's good to me, I'll make a motion to approve those, thank you Lynn.
Wonderful, do we have a second?
Second.
Greg, thank you, go roll call, Jenny. Greg?
Hi.
Billy?
Hi.
Steve?
Hi.
Hi, thank you once again Lynn, for excellent minutes. Okay, anything else before we adjourn?
If I could just um, remind everybody, I've sent out today the agenda. For the December third uh, public hearing, just so that everybody could get it on your calendar. Uh, Bob had asked that um, I could send it out um, today, because. This is not a usual meeting for his ZBA folks, this is your usual meeting. So you wanted to make sure it was on their calendar, but I thought it's an important meeting, so I wanted to make sure you guys remembered too. In case you had any question, if you were having a December meeting, you know, with the holidays and all, so, um, that one came out today. And uh, the eleven twenty-five will be coming out shortly, um, just waiting to see if anything else came in, so I don't have to revise and revise. And then everyone gets confused trying to link into Zoom with so many revisions.
Uh, just, uh, Lynn, just so you know, I did receive that. That is in my inbox, but even um, the resend that you sent at the start of the meeting. Hasn't appeared in my inbox.
I wonder if you have any size constraints, Steve, there were ten attachments.
Yeah, I, I, I'll, I'll check, um, but I, I just wanted to let you know now.
Yeah, we'll double check, did everyone else get theirs? We sent it.
Okay, I.
It's always like opening a little ba- box of gifts when we get your emails, Lynn. Ooh, how many attachments are this one gonna have?
Lot more, and then it wouldn't let me send and they had to start to strip some off, so.
That's frustrating, yeah.
Okay, anything else? Are we all done? I thank you all for tonight, I think good discussions and um, we'll see what happens.
That, that's a, it's kind of a disturbing first.
Yeah, I know, I. I don't know, I just can't quite get over it. And everyone has always been so good, you know, uh, that as soon as they, if they don't know and you tell them, you need a permit, they stop work right away. You know, you don't have to chase them, uh, and it's. And it's just too bad, anyway, uh, very good, we have done our job. Um, that if the EPA comes hunting, we can say, we did what we needed to do, you know.
That, that's more.
And hopefully, it's all they need and they'll.
That's right.
Get their ducks in order and.
They'll just get on the, on the ball.
Yeah.
Anyway, um, would someone like to make a motion to adjourn?
Oh, let's stay in chat. I, I will make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Uh, you're the second, Billy already jumped in and made the motion.
Oh.
You're the second.
I'm the second.
I'll third it.
All right, I'm putting that in there, Greg.
Okay.
Yeah.
Roll call, Greg.
Hi.
Jenny?
Hi.
Steve?
Hi.
Billy?
Hi.
Hi.
Thanks.
Good night all.
Thanks, everyone.
Have a great day.